Morning guys, how are you doing? Oh wow, what a great day, what a great day. Today is Friday. I have to think about it sometimes, you know, I don't always remember what day it is. Okay, so today is Friday and we're gonna kind of follow up on what we've been talking about for the past couple of days actually. So if you've been following along and you've been kind of learning a little bit about how to position yourself as a leader by, you know, becoming the teacher, then you'll be right a lot, you know, right today, we're just gonna kind of follow right along with that and we're going to take the video that we created yesterday, our training video, and we're going to promote it. We're gonna create a blog post, we're going to, you know, upload it to Daily Motion, which is one of my video channels. I already uploaded it yesterday to Vimeo, so I won't be showing you how to do that, but, and then I won't be showing you how to do it, upload it to YouTube either because I don't want it on this channel, I'm gonna put it on one of my other channels. So we're gonna upload our video, we're gonna create a blog post, we're going to, you know, put all our keywords in the post, optimize the post and whatnot, and then we're also gonna be sharing that video directly from the Daily Motion, which is the channel that we're gonna be working with. And we're also gonna share it from Vimeo because I already have it on Vimeo, so that's a couple of things that we're gonna do. And then, of course, you know, depending on our time, we'll go ahead and do a little bit of syndication with our blog posts that we create. And then I also want to go ahead and share another blog post, so hopefully we'll have time to do two blog posts today, because I really wanna share a blog post about Paul Hutchings. If you guys know what's going on with him, he just recently reached his goal, and that was actually a few days early, to pay off his mortgage, so I'm really excited about that. I posted a video on my Facebook wall yesterday that he did, and so we wanna create a blog post about that, because that's an awesome story, and he is just an amazing person. So if you don't know who I'm talking about, he's the one that hosts our morning mindset call. And that's Paul Hutchings, you can find him on Facebook, check him out, and you can also find him in the Think and Grow Rich, or WeAreThinkAndGrowRich.com, which is a Facebook group, so you wanna get on over there. Okay, so let's see here, oh, one announcement, if you weren't already aware, which you probably are, because I've been posting it quite a bit, just, you know, in the past few hours, is I created a new fan page. Excuse me. And it's basically just going to be geared all towards blogging tips, marketing tips, and that sort of thing. And what I plan to do is, if you guys wanna follow my assignments and, you know, kind of put into action what I'm doing, when I show you something and you do it, then what you can do is you can come over to my new fan page and you can post your assignment on the wall, so that, you know, we can all be kind of working together to help each other out. So if you, you know, if you create a video like what I talked about, you know, yesterday, a training video, then come over and let's post it on the wall. And then that will also benefit other people who are coming there, as well as, as help you out and get some, you know, syndication going. So I really wanna recognize those of you who are taking action on what I'm teaching, and that's the, kind of, the, a good way for me to do that. So I just decided to create that fan page, we're gonna be working a lot from there, so make sure you get over there and like that page, and there's a link on my personal profile, I pasted the link also in Facebook invite, and, so yeah, so that's what I wanna do. Okay, now, okay, so this morning, let's go ahead and get our little daily devotional, start our morning with some good mindset, and let's see here. Now that's kind of the biggest thing that, you know, one of the biggest things that Paul was talking about that helped him get to the point where he could actually pay off his mortgage, and, you know, it was all about focus and, you know, being consistent and having a very strong desire to reach that goal. So that's what we wanna do, we wanna, we wanna increase our desire to reach our goal and, you know, get it to the point where it's burning like a blazing huge bonfire in your heart, so that you can, you know, really work towards reaching the goals that you want to achieve. Because I think that that's kind of the, one of the biggest things that people struggle with is staying on task and being consistent, and when you can get that burning hot desire inside of you, that you're gonna have success no matter what happens, then that is when you can break through the obstacles that come up, that you can, you know, kick your way through the walls that get in your way, you know what I mean? Stuff like that, so let's, let's work on that, that's, that's the biggest thing, and, okay, so today is, let's see, conquer doubt, and a quote from As a Man Thinketh, "Thoughts of doubt and fear can never accomplish anything, they always lead to failure." So we know that one of the biggest things that we want to overcome in our own selves is our self-doubt. Okay. There is a significant economic evidence that the Great Depression might have been avoided but for the panic that swept over the country and the world after the 1929 stock market crash. What should have been no more than a deep recession altered our world forever because of the prevailing thoughts of doubt and fear. So great were the thoughts of fear that President Roosevelt felt compelled to deliver a speech about it. By the way, FDR's speech with his now famous "The Only Thing We Have to Fear is Fear Itself" was suggested to him by Napoleon Hill, author of the classic Think and Grow Rich. If the thoughts of many can bring such great tragedy to our world, it is any wonder that our personal thoughts can do so much damage to our individual world. When we spend inordinate amounts of time fearing something or event in the future, many times that which we fear comes upon us. When it does, we wring our hands in despair and wonder why it happened to us, when in reality, we are responsible for our troubles. Bob Proctor says that the process begins first with a doubt which causes an emotion of fear, which manifests itself physically as anxiety. Anxiety robs us of our power, our energy, and our purpose. Severe anxiety can even undermine our health, and it's all brought on by thought of doubt. I have found three things that helped me conquer doubt. First, change your mind about the doubt and keep it changed. If you have a doubt about whether you're going to have enough money to make it to the end of the month, change your mind about it. Whenever the doubt creeps in, affirm to yourself that I always find a way to have enough of what I need. I love what Emmett Fox says about this. "If you will change your mind concerning anything and absolutely keep it changed, that thing must and will change too. It is the keeping up of the change in thought that is difficult. It calls for vigilance and determination." The second thing that overcomes fear and doubt is action. Do the thing you fear and fear will disappear. It is more than a nice writing aphorism, it's something, it's some simple wisdom that always works. And the third and most important thing to overcome doubt and fear is faith. Fear and faith are directly opposite views of the future and they cannot coexist. My faith is in a Creator who has given me domination over all things. Your faith may be elsewhere, but know this, faith and fear cannot be present at the same time, and that's worth thinking about. So what are your thoughts? Do you wanna share your thoughts in, about that in the Facebook event or on my Facebook page? We can kind of get a discussion going on some of these things we talk about each morning. You know, I can tell you right now, it was a couple of different things kind of came up when I was reading that, I shouldn't have put it down. And, you know, like the thing where we have these worries about, you know, maybe not having enough money to make it to the end of the month, and, you know, I've been struggling with that a little bit lately, because my husband's been laid off, and, you know, even though I'm making money in the business, it's not enough yet to cover all the expenses that I have. And so, you know, I have these, you know, little doubts that will come up in my mind that are like, oh my God, am I gonna be able to make the rent? You know, am I gonna be able to, you know, pay our exorbitant cellphone bill? Yeah, and I know a lot of you out there are going, oh, Solvay, Solvay, you know, well, okay, I'm not getting into Solvay right now, focused on Empower. But anyway, and besides, when I do do that, my dad's in it and I'll be joining with him. Okay, regardless, let's see here, I gotta mute this mic, it's over here. Okay, so anyway, so one of the things that I always have done, and I continue to do, every time some kind of fear of whatever comes up, I remember a quote, and I'll tell you, I don't know where I found it, I thought that maybe it came from The Science of Getting Rich, or maybe from Think and Grow Rich, but it goes like this, it says, "When in doubt, relax. Contemplate your vision, renew your faith, believing that everything you desire is on its way to you." Oh wait, no, that's not right, sorry, I missed part of it. See how that goes? When in doubt, woo, I'm losing it altogether. Let me get this going here. I have it written down, there it is, okay. "When in doubt, relax. Contemplate your vision, renew your faith, increase your gratitude, believing that everything you desire is on its way to you." Okay, there we go, I was missing that one part in the middle. And I'll tell you, one of the things that I, that I also say to myself is, you know, I just automatically am telling myself that, you know, I am gonna reach my goals and I am going to, you know, I don't ever have to worry about bills, you know, I have faith that everything's gonna be covered and I'm always gonna have money left over at the end of the month. And those are things I just keep telling myself. And, and you can do the same thing, so whatever, wherever you are in your business, or wherever you are in your situation, you know, you know, if you're, if you're sitting here and you have a goal in your mind and it's coming up on that time, and you're like, oh gosh, I'm just not sure, remember that when you have those feelings of doubt, the best thing that you can do is just to relax and refocus on your vision, whatever your burning desire is to have happen, and just thank the universe that it is bringing to you the resources and the help that you need in order to make that happen in your life, and just keep thinking about those things, push that other stuff out of your mind, and focus on what you want, not what you are doubting yourself on. So, okay, with that being said, let's go ahead and move on to what we're gonna do today, which is, we're gonna go find our video, we're gonna create, we're gonna do a little sharing with it, and then we will create a post from that video. Okay, so, let's see here, alright. Ah, I found the, I found the comments in here, cool, hey Don, good morning. Awesome, awesome, I found it. I don't know why I never saw it before, but I didn't, okay, cool. So hey, if you're on the video, shoot me a message, if you're watching, say hey, shoot a message in the, in the, in the YouTube stream, or the YouTube messages, let me see if another one, if it kind of updates automatically, or if it takes a little bit, but, cool, cool. Okay, well, anyway, I'm gonna go ahead and switch over to screen share, and we are going to get busy. Start that, there we go. It's cool how we get a kind of look off into infinity. Okay, um, blah, blah, blah. Alright, let's minimize this, ah, I see you Don, awesome, awesome. Alright, let's see, which page do I need here? This is it, okay, so, I already put this video up on my Vimeo channel, and this is the one we created yesterday, How to Embed YouTube Video Blogger Plus a Bonus at the End. And that was just basically my call to action, in that, the bonus was called action at the end. So hopefully you saw that, if not, you can jump back on, on this channel that we're on right here and just look at that video from yesterday, and that, that was how we talked about that, making that video, and I just, you know, you just gotta follow right through as I was doing it. Okay, so, what I did, when I uploaded it, is a couple of different things. One, I brought all of my tags, you know, keywords over into, into the description and whatnot for this particular video, so we've got our basic information, we wanna make sure you have your keyword in the title, because remember, when we picked out this particular training to do, we did it based on this keyword that we found that had low competition and had pretty decent amount of traffic. So that's our keyword right here, is this Embed YouTube Video Blogger. So we wanna make sure that that is in the title, we also wanna make sure that that's in the first sentence in our description, and we also wanna make sure that we put a link to wherever we wanna link to, at the top of the description, so it's kind of the first thing that people see, and depending on what channel you put it on, that link will be clickable. Well, actually, I think it's clickable in all the descriptions, for some reason I had it in my head that it was gonna be clickable on the video in the viewing mode, but maybe they changed that. So anyway, that's, that's regardless, okay. So anyway, and then you wanna put all your tags in here, and if you remember, I found a bunch of related keywords when I did a search for Embed YouTube Video Blogger, and I scrolled down to the bottom, it brought up all of these related searches, and that's what I, I kind of took. Now, what I did, after I found all these, before I put them on this video, I actually removed a couple, because this one, it says Embed YouTube Video Live Journal, TypePad, Zanga, you know, these ones obviously are not related to our video, but this is three good ideas for videos that you could do, training videos, okay? Because Live Journal, I believe, is some kind of like, you know, blogging related, or I don't know if it's, I don't know, I know I have an account there, but I don't really use it very much, other than just for syndication with OnlyWire, so I don't know exactly how it works, but I think there's some kind of free blogging type of platforms, and I have no idea what Zanga is, but right there, three videos, so each one, you could pick one of those and then focus it, focus it on that, and you're targeting the right audience. And listen, even if you don't know how to do it on here, go over there and figure it out. When you figure it out, do a training video on it, right? Okay, so there we go. Anyway, we're gonna take those off, and delete them, so I already did this, but I'm deleting those, and then I'm gonna take all of these, and that's what I'm gonna embed, or not embed, that's what I'm gonna put in, in the tags section down here, okay? So you can see, I've already done that. And then, depending on how many videos you have on your Vimeo channel, you can create a list, and this, I already, I already have a list, I think I put it on Vendor Video Marketing or Blogging Tips, or something like that, so you can add it to a list. Okay, so that's what I've done on this channel. Now, what we wanna do, is we wanna go ahead and do some sharing. Let's see, I don't know if this is gonna autoplay or not, hopefully not. Okay. Now, you can see that when you go to the page the video is hosted on, it'll have this share button up here. And when you click on it, look at all these different places that you can automatically share to, you wanna go ahead and use each one of them, okay? You wanna share it on Facebook, and on Twitter, and Google, and Tumblr, and Pinterest, and Reddit, just automatically do it, go through them. And I'm gonna go ahead and just do a couple of them on this one, and then I'm gonna go ahead and do a couple when we upload it to Daily Motion as well. Because obviously, if it's the exact same video, you don't wanna share it in the same place twice, otherwise it would just be silly. Okay, that's interesting, you know, you kind of put some tags in there, some hashtags. Interesting, okay, so we don't need all of that in there, so we gotta edit our little description just a little bit. And this is, you know, really, a lot of the processes, you wanna make sure that you are, you know, syndicating your videos, just like you would syndicate blog posts, you wanna syndicate your videos. There we go, perfect. On there, let me go ahead and share it on Google+, it's just gonna end up on my Google+ channel that I'm logged into, which I don't really have a lot going on there, but this is how you do it. And you wanna go ahead and put a comment in that has your keyword in it, so just rewrite the title. There we go, we just do that, and then if you have more circles, obviously you can share it to more circles. And then on Tumblr. See how easy this is? It just automatically puts everything together, so all you gotta do is just, you know, click submit, or create post, or whatever, and it's good to go. It's easy to do that, and it's the same way, you have all these kind of sharing buttons over on YouTube, and I'll show you how it works on Daily Motion too. Okay, so we've got it, we've uploaded it here, we've done some sharing, and, you know, if you have OnlyWire, go ahead and OnlyWire it out. If you've got TribePro, you know, make sure it's getting syndicated to TribePro, all those different things. And this, this channel actually is an RSS feed in my TribePro account, actually, and in my OnlyWire account as well, so it automatically does that, which is very convenient, so, you know, I still share it, but it automatically gets shared for me too. Okay, so then, let's see, let's go ahead and jump on over to Daily Motion, and I'll show you how to upload videos. You're gonna just, obviously you have to have your Daily Motion account set up, ready to go, and then you just need to click on the Upload a Video button, and then we click it again, then we go and find our video on the computer, which is right there. Okay, now, it's gonna start uploading, and while it's doing that, we wanna make sure we have our title in here, and on here, it requires that you say what channel it's gonna be on, and depending on what it is, I'll just put it on, you know, like this one, I'll put it on Geekout, because that's kind of like, you know, tech-related stuff, I guess, but depending on what your article is about, or your video is about, you can put it on an appropriate channel. Okay, now, the tags work just a little bit different on Daily Motion, so sometimes it'll take them, and sometimes it wants to chop them up. I'm not sure why, so I just put them in there and see what they do. And hit Enter, see how it does that? It just goes and it cuts them up, but I don't know why it does that. If anybody knows, let me know. Yeah, it's not gonna take it, don't know why. Okay, well, either way, we'll just try a couple of other ones. Sometimes it'll take the smaller ones, so we'll just put a couple like that. There we go, okay. Okay, so it's got, we've got a couple on there that are kind of similar. Okay, and then we wanna put our description in here, and what I'm just gonna do, I'm just gonna go over here and grab the description from this video. Oh, and let me kind of show you this just a little bit, when I created this description, I made sure, A, that I was using my keyword, but I also used a couple of the other similar keywords in this as well, okay? So like this, How to Post Video on Blogger, Embed YouTube Video Blogger, um, let's see, if there's another, if I used another one. Yeah, if you've been unable to embed YouTube Video Blogger, that was one of the keywords unable, so I just kind of created a few sentences, just to get those keywords in there, and actually, copy, I usually always put the tags in the bottom of the description as well. And once we get this, once we get this blog post created, we'll come back over here and we'll put a link to our blog post, so that way we have all the videos pointing at our blog post. Makes sense? Okay, so then, all right, here's what I wanted to do. Select All, which is Ctrl+A, we'll select all, Ctrl+C, we'll copy, we'll bring it over here, Ctrl+V, and that paste it in there. And actually, what I think I'm gonna do is visit, I'm gonna change this to say, Visit My Fan Page for More Tips. And then put that in there, and I did, let's see, what did I call it? I think I called it Easy Blogging, yeah. And it's on my dot info. There we go. So then, you know, that can encourage people to come on over and check out my, my fan page, and I'll tell you something, you take a look at my fan page, I just kind of did a little bit of, you know, research on what some other successful leaders were doing with their fan pages, and I just kind of mimicked it a little bit. I'm not completely done with all the description and about, and, you know, mission statement, all that kind of stuff. But I, I did do some of what is similar, and one of the things that I did was in the description at the, or the About section, as I put a link to a training, or actually, it's to opt-in for my Blogging 101 video series, and I'll tell you, I just created this fan page last night, and I've already gotten like three leads from it, and I think, as of right, you know, earlier, I only had like, you know, maybe 16 or so likes for my page so far, so having that in there is, is pretty powerful, so, okay. So anyway, I kind of went off on another direction there, didn't I? Either way, it's good for you to know. Okay, so then we wanna click Save. Good, good, and then, let's see here, let's go back to our show infos, that's the description, and let's see, if we wanna add it to a particular list, I can't remember what playlist I have on here. Okay, so I put it on Blogging 101, and also on Video Marketing. Those are two lists that I'd be good in. And then we'll click Save. Okay, so, now that we've got that done, we'll go ahead and we'll click over to the See Video side, and it's gonna autoplay, so we'll pause it here in a second.
Hey guys!
There we go. Okay, so, let's see, where are the social sharing buttons? Is this it? That's my embed, and, there, okay, this makes it easy, it just automatically brings up some different ones, so we're gonna go ahead and tweet it out, and I'm actually gonna tweet it out on my other, my other Twitter account, that way, you know, same video, just gonna stick it on my other Twitter. Weird, I don't know what all this extra stuff is. Is that part of the... I don't know what all that is, I'm gonna leave it in there, 'cause that might be part of the link, it may not, I can't tell. And, let's see here, I think I'll go ahead and tag my other Twitter in here. Is that one of the other ones? I gotta remember. I think it's Success With Sam, ah, good enough, I'd be posting it and tagging somebody else if that isn't right. I couldn't remember if it's success, @SuccessWithSam or @SuccessWithSamantha, so it'll be what it is. Okay, and then, close that, and then we can share it on LinkedIn, of course. Post that up there. Close that window. Awesome, awesome. And then, see if the... And then, see this little plus thing right here? It brings up all these other places you can share to. So let's say we just wanna go ahead and, let's post it on Pinterest. So then you just have to pick an image from your video that you want in there. Or I guess it picks images all off this little page. I don't like the images it's pulling up, so I'm not gonna share this to Pinterest from Daily Motion. I like the way it works better when you share it from YouTube. Or I may just wait and share it from, what am I saying? From the blog post, that's what I'm saying. Right, right, right. So we'll share it on Reddit, since we didn't share the other one on Reddit. Okay. Okay. Yeah, I don't get it with these subreddit. Some of them exist, some of them you'd think they should, but then they don't. And it's saying that one doesn't? I thought that I just found that. It's right there. All right, I got too many things I'm sharing there, so it won't let me share it. No big deal, we'll find someplace else to share it. Let's see. So, oh, check these out, it just brings up a whole bunch. Let's see what else I get. So anyway, this is basically it. You can just, you know, share it on all kinds of different ones if you want to. I can't remember what my login for Chine is. No, I don't, that's not it. Okay, well, either way, share your video. This one's automatically gonna be going out through my OnlyWire anyway. But you get the idea. Oh, here, we can do it on Stumblefind, that'll be a good one. And of course, when you do share it, you know, pick an appropriate category. And Video Equipment, see if there's any from Blogging. Well, we'll just go with, not Boodyism, business. There we go. And then we can grab our tags. Paste those in there. And then, you know, with the comment, you just wanna go basic. We want our comment to be, oops, sorry, wrong one. Oh, here's where I need to go. I'm clicking on the wrong things. There, we'll just copy this. Add this page. All right. So then, you've shared it in a number of places, and now we're good to go ahead and create our blog post. So let's get logged in. All right, computer. What are you doing, computer? There it goes. I was thinking. Okay, now, what I'm gonna do with this is I am just gonna create a new post. Actually, I'm gonna go get my signature first. And, you know, what I mean by that is I just have basically the same kinda thing that I post on everyone, well, almost every one of my articles, at the bottom of the post, which is just kinda my post signature. So I wanna go get that first. Oh, that reminds me, this post on here, if you guys haven't seen it, this is a post I did, or the video interview I just did with Franco Gonzalez a week or so ago. I posted it in this blog post. It's called "Overworked Dump Truck Woman Driver Says F This to 16-Hour Days and Now Generates Income From the Internet." So go check out that post, I thought it was kinda fun when I made it. And it's got that interview that Franco did with me. So it'll be like the first one on my blog. Of course, it'll be the second one, once we create our new post, but that's where you can find it. It was fun, I like Franco. If you guys ever gonna hang out with Franco, he rocks. Okay, so let's see here. I wanna find my signature. And... Okay. Everything from this point on down. I'm gonna copy that. And then we're gonna add new post. And then I'm just gonna paste my signature in there. And then we can see it on the Visual tab. So then you can see I've got this, I got the Share button on here. I always connect to the daily action assignments. I have a little signature picture. And by the way, I found this online somewhere, or it was just like, I don't even know. I just did a search for like, you know, signature pictures, or something like that, or create signature. I don't know, that's how I found it. Okay, and then I always have a picture, you know, on a little call-to-action-y kinda thing, and connect with me on Facebook. And I'm, actually, I'm gonna change this to my fan page, from here on out. That way, we can start building a fan page, 'cause that's where I feel like, is we're gonna have the most success with, since we're focusing on teaching. Okay, so what I will do here is, enter Edit Link. Actually, what I want to do is I wanna change my hypertracker link for that. That way, I can actually track how many people are clicking on this particular link. 'Cause right now, I have them, you know, getting tracked. So that's what I wanna do. So, but let's, I'm not gonna focus on that right now. We'll just go, we'll simple, for the moment. And I'm just gonna change it to my subdomain. Oops. Yeah, we'll cover the tracking thing in another one. I don't wanna mess this, it's not that I don't wanna mess it up. I don't want to do too many things all at once in one video, because then that just makes everything confusing. But you can see my daily, this is all over the place kinda thing. You know, we kinda get distracted sometimes. Okay, so... Yeah, that's another thing, is as I will edit that in the future one, so I could track it. And also, I'm going to be switching over my Author box to be redirecting to my fan page too. 'Cause right now, I have it, I think it's going to the Ian Wealth Team fan page. And, you know, we started out going strong with that, and then a bunch of the ladies just kinda petered out. And so we're not really working together anymore, so... You know, even though I've been posting on there, it's not really a focused fan page, it just kind of exists. Okay, so let's see here. Now, what we wanna do is we wanna get our title. So we're just gonna jump over here and grab everything from our video, our video description. Let's see here. Copy. See, this is a great thing. Once you create all this information on your video, then you just bring it over, make it a blog post, super fast. And then you wanna make sure that your permanent link has your keyword in it, and it doesn't need anything else, other than the keyword. Okay, got that. Now what we can do is, since we've created that, I know we're not live yet, but it doesn't matter. We can go ahead and copy that URL before we even go any further. And we can paste it. We'll just, instead of having this say, "visit my blog for more tips," oh, right, I was gonna put that one, "visit training," actually. We'll just go "read more" on my blog. Yeah. And then we'll paste that URL in there, so that it links to... So the video links to our blog post, so we can do it on Daily Motion also. And this is, you know, it's just one way to create backlinks to your blog. And I'll tell you, the more places that you put stuff, the more that you're gonna be positioning yourself as a leader. 'Cause I'll tell you, you know, I can't tell you how many times that people have come to me and been like, "I see you everywhere." You know? Everywhere they go. I'm on LinkedIn, I'm on Facebook, I'm on YouTube, I'm on Daily Motion, I'm on Vimeo, I'm on Twitter, you know? I mean, it's just, you know, the more places that you are, the more likely people are gonna be able to find you. Okay, and I'm just pasting the Facebook link in here. There we go. Okay, and then we can jump back over. What we wanna do is we wanna get the description, 'cause we're gonna make that our blog post, basically. Copy that. And it's just gonna kinda be a little generic part, you know, blog part, blog post-ness-ish, whatever you wanna call it. Okay, and if you can come up with more to write for your post, then that's even better. 'Cause, you know, if you give it a little bit more words, then it's gonna be more beneficial. Okay, and then we wanna get our tags. And put that over on our video, or on our post. There we go, so we've got those, that's good. And then we wanna choose our category. And what I think that we'll do is we will go ahead and add a category just for Blogger. So if we go Social Media, and add a category to Social Media, and just put it as Blogger, and then we can also put it under Video Marketing. But let's see here, Add New Category. Because then, when people come over to your blog, and they go searching through your categories, they may find something they didn't even know they were looking for. Because something, you know, they'll see a category that says Blogger, and they'll be like, "Oh, Blogger. I have a Blogger blog. I'd like to learn something about that." Okay, Blogger. All righty, and... Okay, so now what we wanna do is we wanna get our video. So we're gonna decide where we want our video, and we'll put it, actually, what we're gonna do is we're gonna put it right here. All right, so we need to go get our code. And I'm just gonna use Vimeo. You can use Daily Motion if you want to. All right, I don't remember if we made changes or not, I'm gonna click Save, just in case. Then return to the video, so we can get our embed code. And there's our Share button, so we're gonna click on our Share button. And Show Options. So it's gonna show you what it's gonna look like. And you can change it around a little bit. I like 590, as far as the width goes, 'cause that fits perfectly in our blog. But you can add these other little things, like it'll have a title, which is this up here. You can add your portrait, if you want your picture to show up on there like that. And then the byline, you know, it can say that. I just usually have it just have the title. And then, over here, you can set whether you want it to automatically play, if you want it to loop, which just means, you know, only play this, don't play anything related, you know, when it's over. Actually, I don't know if it does that on Vimeo, but it'll just stop, or it'll keep playing, whichever one you set. And then, if you want the description to show up below the video, it can automatically embed that in there too. But we're not gonna do that. We're gonna let it show the text link under the video, because we're gonna use that and say, you know, "subscribe to my channel." Okay, so then you wanna go up here, and when you click in there, it automatically highlights it. So then you're just gonna copy it. Come back over to your post. And paste it in there. And then you can go back to the Visual side and see what it's gonna look like. Okay? So there's our video. And what I like to do is, instead of have this be from Samantha Studerberg on video, I just change this to Follow. On Vimeo. There we go. So people can automatically go to the video if they want to. This creates a link that goes to your video, which is a backlink. And then, of course, our other links that we put in the video, links back to the blogs, that's good. Okay, so now what we wanna do is, since we're working towards keyword optimization, and our keyword is "embed YouTube video blogger." That's our keyword, and if you hit the Tab button, it will... Or maybe you have to hit the Enter. We'll see what it's gonna do. There we go. Okay, so we have a really low score. More words needed, right? Okay, so it tells you, okay, you need more words. Right on. Okay, and then we also need to have our "rel no follow" in our links, and I'll show you that. I think we went through it once, one other time, but we'll go through it again. Images don't have Alt Tag set to them, so we need to do that. We need H2 Tag, H3 Tag, we need our keyword bolded and italicized and underlined, which I don't really worry about, 'cause it never catches it anyway. Okay, so what we're gonna go ahead and do, first of all, is... We're just gonna make an H2 Tag. Okay, and then we're just gonna highlight that. So I just said, "learn two awesome ways to embed YouTube video Blogger." I know, it doesn't sound perfect, because it's not grammatically correct, but that is the keyword. And that gets the point across. You know, we're not trying to win a grammatical contest here. We're trying to rank on the search engines. And granted, if it was like way... And granted, if it was like way, way off and sounded completely retarded, then obviously, we would not choose that keyword, because we don't want to sound like we're stupid, obviously. Or if it was misspelled or something like that. I would not use a misspelled keyword, even though people search for it in, as a main keyword in my blog post. I would put it in the tags, it would be a secondary keyword. Makes sense? Of course. Alright, and then in this first sentence, we're just going to go ahead and make this bold. And obviously, we want to capitalize that. Okay. I'll just show you the best ways. Okay, so it kind of just repeats what we're already saying, but let's see here. What we can do is, I've got to think back how we did this video and kind of write a couple things about it. What did we do? We did... Oh, okay. You must find the correct code to... Video to embed. Oh, "Embed YouTube Video Blogger." Okay, so we just made another sentence on here, just kind of a little bit... And we'll just italicize that one. Okay. HTML editor on your blogger blog. Okay, so it's just add some extra text in here to just kind of, you know, fill it in and add more words. And you know, if you've just done a training, you could even, if you wanted to, step one, do this, step two, do that, step three, do that. Just write it all out, which would be just fine. And then we can just kind of give some tips. Be sure, let's see here, we'll do, we'll just kind of do a secondary heading, which is... "YouTube Video Blogger," and what was I just thinking? Lost my train of thought there for a second. Make a heading while I'm thinking about it. Ah, here we go. There we go. And then we can just say... Actually, I've got to think about that. Where, is it just a share button on the videos? Before I go writing it out, I want to make sure I'm telling them correctly, obviously. So let's just go find a video real quick. Okay, so we would click the share button. I'm going to pause that. You don't want to listen to me talking about that. Okay, so we clicked the share button, and then it seems like there's another more. Oh, okay. Click the arrow to the right of the three buttons, and you will see more buttons. There we go. Okay. Okay. And we'll go like that. And then we'll just say, you know, watch the video, see exactly how this is done. Makes sense? Okay, so let's see if that's enough words, and if we have all of the words that we needed. I'm not really sure. See what that does. Alright, so now we have a 70% score. We have enough words as far as this little SEO score tool is concerned. We need to add our keyword to the images and the rel no follow to our links. And then we'll be good to go on this. Okay, but before we do that, we want to put a call to action in our blog post. And we also want to go ahead and... Let's see here, copy this link address, which is me on Vimeo. And since this says "Subscribe to my channel," I'm just going to highlight it and make that a link. Make sure it opens in a new window. Add link. Okay, so that's there. Okay, let's see. Now, in the video, I did a call to action in here. And I said something to the effect of, "If you want to learn how to make more money with your blog, click the link below the video that said, and learn three things that'll always make money," or whatever. So that would be a link directly to the "Make Money Now" page. Now, what I have in here is to have like a banner. So I'm going to add that banner right below, because it basically says exactly what I said in the video. Alright, hold on a second, I'll make sure I'm placed in the right spot. So I'm going to click there. Add this media. And let's see, I've got to find that button. Just going to scroll down until I see it. There it is, oh, there we go. No, that's not it. It's just similar. This one. And by the way, if you like this little banner, all you have to do is come over to my blog, right-click, and download it to your own computer. Okay, now I'm going to change the keyword for this, because it's going to be in this blog post, and it's embed to Video Blogger. And you know, the great thing about adding these descriptions to your picture is it actually puts your keyword in your post more. Oops, I said blogger in this misspelled video. So if you're stressed and worried that maybe you don't have enough text, you know, enough words in your blog, when you add the, you know, your keyword to your alternate text for your images, that helps add more words to your blog, basically, because it's... Puts it in the HTML code. Oh, there it is there. I just didn't see it. Alright, then we want to link to our page. Let's see here. So we want to go get the landing page that we want them to go to, which will be the "Make Money Now" page. So I just got to go get it from the cheat sheet. So this is the one right here. Copy. And then I want to put it over here. And then I always put the ampersand, and you know, I'll either go BLG and today's date, or I'll put the keyword. So the keyword's kind of long, so I'm just going to go BLG. And today is the 29th, is it? Yep. Okay, and I'm just going to put it in here full-size, even though it's too huge. We're going to drag it to be smaller. Or actually, we're going to edit it to be smaller. So if we click on that, go to the Edit Images, or Edit Image, and then go to the Advanced Settings. What we're going to do is, this is a trick I learned from Chris Record, we're going to put 100%. Leave the height as zero, and it'll automatically make it as wide as your, as wide as your blog. And then I always put about 20 for vertical space above them, and then that'll create space above and below between your picture and your text. And then where it says "Link rel," you want to put "No follow." Make sure there's a space in between the "No" and the "Follow." Click Open in a New Window, and then Update. Okay, so then it automatically has this banner in here, right below our video, where we say in the video to click the link below to learn these three things that make you money every time. Right? Okay, and then everything else looks good. Now we just need to change our keyword in these images. And this one already should have the "No follow." Yeah, it does. Okay, we're good with this. And you just want to go through and do it with all of your pictures. It's this little, little stuff like this that can make the difference when you're trying to rank for keywords. And actually, I don't mean rank for keywords exactly. I think we had the conversation the other day, where we were talking about, you know, getting your stuff found because of keywords. And I'm talking about, you know, when you share it in many different places, people may be searching for that keyword on those other sites, and you can be found there, not just on Google. So even if you don't rank on Google, you might rank on Dailymotion, or Vimeo, or SlideShare. And I'll show you how we will put this on SlideShare as well. You know, and in many different locations, you can, you know, all the different places you share it, you can get people searching for you and find your content based on that. Okay, so in my PS line, I've been promoting the ENTV posts, and so let's go ahead and go get the newest one. Let's see here. We just need to go over to the main blog. And somebody was asking me yesterday about how to share the main blog post with your list. So this is one of the ways that you can do it. Let's see here. Okay, so let's use... Let's do this one. I think this is on autoplay, so I'll pause it. Okay, maybe not. Alright, so remember, you just want to get the URL and change your username on the end of it, so that it says ID equals your username. Or question mark ID equals your username. So you want to copy that. And then remember the title, "Are you open for business?" Look here. And then you just want to paste that in there, and then click Update. Why don't? Okay, and I have noticed that I believe that I'm getting leads from doing this. And the reason I say that is because I'm still getting leads from the "Almost a Secret" page. And the only way that I can do that is if they're coming off of this page, because my main blog doesn't have that link anymore. I updated my sidebar, so the only links that are there are ones that I'm tracking. And, but yet, I'm still getting leads from the "Almost a Secret" page, and that is what is on this banner right here. This one goes to the "Almost a Secret" page. So that's how I know. Makes sense? Because I can't track it directly. Because even if you put a tracking link at the end of this URL, it won't track, it won't show, that won't show up. It's only when they click on the capture page that it shows up. Hope that makes sense. Okay, so my last word in my post, I want that to be my keyword. Alright, and I just kind of make it a light text. I make it that light gray, and it just kind of sits down there at the bottom, kind of like a reference term at the bottom of an article or whatever. You know, that's kind of how I look at it. And I just moved it down a little bit. Okay, so let's see here. Let's go ahead and check this. I might have to edit some links for that "No follow." I'm not sure. Okay, yep, okay. So we've got our images with the alt tag with our keywords, so now we just need to find the links that need this rel no follow. So we're going to go over to our HTML side, our text side. And we're going to scroll down. And if you have a picture that you put the "No follow" in on that little, the little line on the Edit Picture, you'll be able to find exactly the way that it's supposed to look. So if you look right here, when we put the banner picture in, we wrote down "No follow." Well, it automatically created the code "rel = nofollow." That's the code you want. Ctrl C for copy. And you want it to be right after this "target = blank." Okay, so if you're looking for your links, you're going to be looking for this "href = link?" Then it'll say "target = blank" if you've chosen for it to open a new page. That's what that made, means. And you want to have a space, and then paste your "No follow" code in there. So we're just going to scroll down, and I'll show you what I'm talking about. Okay, so this link right here, the one that says "If you like this training, click Like," and, let's see here, "To get instant updates..." and, uh, let's see here, to get instant updates when I upload new training videos, okay? So this is the link, and it says href=, and that's my Vimeo channel, then after the quotation mark, it has target=quotationmarks? Space, blank. We want to get right after that quotation mark, hit a spacebar, and paste it right in there. Then we're just gonna go right on down the line and look for any other ones, which I believe that might be the only one. Because all these ones should be good. Okay, so let's just go ahead and go on up. Enter and see if that fixes it. Are you still thinking, or am I still missing one? I bet it's the last one. Let's see here. Nope, that has the NoFollow. NoFollow, NoFollow. And you can find all your links because you're just looking for that href. href. href, href. Right there. That one. What other one am I missing? Is this it? Yes, it didn't take on that one, I think. href. Ah, okay, so it's this first link and this second. There's three links there, isn't there? Okay, so we have to add it three times. And we actually want them to open in a new window too, so we're gonna add that as well. But we're gonna start... Let's just do this. Okay, we're gonna copy this whole thing from this other link, which is target=blank and ref=NoFollow, because we want those links to open in a new window, and we want them to be NoFollow links. So we're just gonna go right after that quotation mark, so we have the href=the link? Quotation marks? A space, Ctrl+V, we're gonna paste that all in there, and then we'll do the same thing with the next one. Right after the link, quotation marks, space, Ctrl+V. And then the last one also. Okay. And that should do it, I believe. Think so, think so. Okay, so we've got 15 minutes. Yep, there we go. Did it. Got it. Got it, did it. Okay, see, that was pretty easy. Not too terribly complicated, right? Okay, so we're gonna preview our post. And before I do that, it's 15 minutes to Mike's Daily Live Coaching, and that's where he does the 10K, Get Up to 10K in 90 Days Daily Action Plan Training. I know I've been saying exactly what it is for, but that's what it's for. That's his whole goal, is to get people when they first get in, you know, through their first 90 days, so they get up to that 10K a month within the first 90 days. Now, I know I've had a number of people that have been asking me, you know, because I just recently posted, one of my goals was that, you know, I wanted to get 10 people up to 10K a month, and three people up to 30K a month. Well, in order to get to that 10K a month, you've gotta be following Mike's Daily Live Coaching, because he tells you exactly, step by step by step, what you need to be doing. So basically, I'm just guiding you to that training, and then if you have questions that he can't answer, because, or he hasn't answered, or whatever, then you can get with me, and between the two of us, that is our goal, to get you, when you get started, up to 10K a month. Because once you get to there, you know, it's all downhill from there. Right? You know? That helps you out. That gets you to the point where you can quit your job, and, you know, work on this full-time, right? Okay. So let's see here. Alright, preview, that was what I was gonna do next. Open a new window. And if you are not on my team, and you don't know what I'm talking about as far as Mike's training goes, you just need to be a member of Prosperity Team. And if you're in a Power Network and you're not a member of Prosperity Team, yeah, you just need to join their Easy Money Formula system, and that will automatically get you adopted by Prosperity Team. So shoot me a message, and I'll give you the link to that, if you want to be a part of the team and take advantage of that 90 Days to 10K training. Okay, um, let's see here. So I want to scroll down, want to look at this. Just kind of read through it, make sure it makes all sense. There we go, our video looks good, then we've got our banner in there, which is perfect. Subscribe the channel, our links work, that's what's important. I want to make sure that links work. Yep. There we go. So you can see, you know, when I put this in here at the bottom, it's just real white, and it just kind of looks like a reference of some sort. Makes sense? And it just adds the keyword in your post one more time, and it puts it at the end, which is helpful. Okay, so we're good to go on this post. We can go ahead and publish it. Click Publish. Oh, you know what I needed to do? I forgot. I forgot to set a featured image. And it's always a good idea to put an image in your post, just for... It looks good. Other than just banners in my, you know, signature picture. We'll go find a picture to put on our post. Sound like a plan? Maybe we'll find a picture related to blog, or video, or whatever. Actually, I think I have a... Uh, why are you doing that? Go back. Yeah, so let's just put a little picture up here, kind of at the top of our post. Add Media. I thought maybe I had an image that was video, but apparently not so much. Okay, no big deal. Let's go find one. Go over here, and we just do a search. Just gonna do a search for video marketing, and look for images. There we go. And we just... That one's kind of a cool picture, eh? Let's go with that one. Select the image, or actually, we'll want to save as to our computer. And then what we'll also do is, we will also save it, save the URL, so we can use it when we do our, when we create our sharing link. Well, I thought that we were gonna be able to do two blog posts, but it's taking longer to create this post than... Then what would make it so that we can do two? So we're just doing one. If I have time later today, I may do that other one. The mortgage, you know, the Paul paying off his mortgage one. Alright, come on, computer. Don't start with me. You know, I sometimes wonder if just being on here for a little while gets bogged down, since we're doing this live stuff. It didn't go bumping us off, did it? Hey, yesterday, we got bumped off kind of there, right near the end, didn't we? So it kind of just ran out without being finished. Alright, well, it seems like we're still going. There it goes. And this, or change the name of this. We'll save that. And then what we want to do is, we want to right-click on this image and save, Copy Image URL, so that copies it, so that we can use it in our... In our link shortener. Okay, and so what I'm gonna do is, I'm just gonna paste that image link on this page, just for reference for the moment, till we're ready to create that link. Okay, minimize that. Then we can close this window, and that one. And then we can upload this file. And I could, obviously, I could share it from that URL that I copied, but if they delete that image off of that page, for whatever reason, or they change where it's located, or anything like that, then it would make it disappear from my blog post. So I want to download it and then re-upload it. I pretty much won't use a, you know, URL location on any of my blog posts, unless it's a photo that I personally host somewhere, like on my PhotoBucket account, or on Facebook, or something like that. And obviously, you want to put your keyword in there again. And here, you know, another reason that we do this is so that when people search for this term, if they click on the Images tab, then when they see this image, or this image will show up for this particular search term. So that's another reason why we want to have that alt text in our images. And when they click on the image, if they aren't just gonna save it, and they want to see what it's all about, they click through and end up on your blog. Makes sense, of course? Okay, so let's see, we're going to link this. Let's just link it to our video. On, here, we'll link to Daily Motion this time. We'll just link to our video someplace else. Makes sense? You know, or we could link to a capture page if we wanted to. It's really, it's up to you, where you want to link. Let's see, if we can just get... Where's the simple URL? I thought that there was a simple one. It should be. I'm not clicking the right thing.
Hey guys, it's Samantha Studbaker Carl here.
There we go. If we click on Twitter, that'll give us the link, I think. There it is. I think that was it. I don't think this is part of it. Let's try it. Paste it here, and see if it goes straight to the video. Yep, that was it. So we'll just link directly to there. And this, we'll go with, we'll go with the medium, and then we'll shrink it down a little bit. So insert into post. Okay, so we have three minutes until Mike's coaching. So if you're on Prosperity Team, go ahead and jump on over there. All I'm gonna do now is just save this post, and then we'll just be doing the regular syndication with it. And I'll show you syndication on another day, where we're just using a different post, okay, guys? If you're not on Prosperity Team, and you want to just keep on watching, you're more than welcome to. I'm just gonna finish this, and then jump on Mike's coaching also. So, um, couple of things. So make sure you're subscribed to this channel, in case, you know, just in case you aren't already. That way you can get updates. Anytime I upload the daily training, you'll get an update when the recording is up, in case you miss it one day. And today's Friday, so tomorrow, meet me tomorrow, 10:00 AM, on, and it will be on this channel for our Saturday Morning Mastermind. We're talking about the book, The Science of Getting Rich. So come mastermind with us on Saturday mornings. And that's it for today. So guys, thanks for hanging out with me. I hope you guys are getting some value from this. Hey, go over and post something on the fan page, the new fan page, about this training, and tell me what you're thinking. Post any questions that you have. If you want me to cover something, let me know, and we will kind of move forward on that. And then, also, when you do this assignment, you know, bring it over to the fan page and post it on there, okay? You know, I don't want people posting capture pages or anything like that. We're not, you know, spamming my page. But I will allow you, if you're following the assignments that I'm giving, to post your blog post, or post your video over there, and just show what you learned. You know? Okay? Makes sense? And we'll just kind of help each other out. And so that's it. So I'll see you tomorrow morning on our Morning Mind Tech Call. Otherwise, I will see you on Monday morning at 10:30 AM for our next live work session. With that, I'll see you guys later, and have a great day. Thanks, guys. Actually, okay, I'm gonna finish this up, real quick. So, but anybody who wants to go ahead and go can. Makes sense? Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and right-side align this real quick. Click on the Edit. I've got my alternate text in here. It's linking to the Daily Motion video. I'm gonna put some spacer around it. And what was the other thing I was gonna do? Oh, I gotta add the NoFollow and open a new window. Open new window and Update. And that should be good. Let's preview it, see what it looks like. And that should set it as the... As the featured image. If not, we will set the featured image. And the featured image, in case you don't know what that is for, is it'll show up on like Google Plus and that sort of stuff, when you post your blog over on Google Plus. It'll automatically show up. Where's my video not there? I think I have to save it before it'll preview correctly. Go down. There it is. Now it popped up. Okay, all looks good. Then we can just go ahead and check our featured image. Yep, okay, see it popped up there already? And then we're gonna go ahead and publish it. Oh, and one thing, this excerpt section right here, if you wanted to write a description in here, this is what will show up on your blog homepage underneath the title, when it has your whole list of all your different posts that you have. You can change that to whatever you want, by doing it here in the excerpt. So you know how it automatically just kind of pulls text from your post? It will do that if you leave this blank, but if you fill this in, you can write whatever you want for your description, for that to show up on your home, your blog homepage, basically. Alrighty, so then we publish it. I'm gonna go ahead and go log into Mike's training on my other computer. Let's see here. I gotta find it. Alright, well, I'm gonna do that. Let me finish this. Okay. So that's it. That's it. We're published. We're ready to go. Now all you gotta do is go through and share it. And that'll be our syndication for today. Okay, so, that being said... I will see you guys in the next training video. Thanks for hanging out with me, and I look forward to seeing you again on another one. Thanks, bye. Have a good day.